Live in five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening regular meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with us at the DICE, we have every member of council present, including Madam Manager, Madam Attorney, and Madam Clerk. As we begin our meeting, we'll ask you all to join us for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask council members to take a moment to review the agenda and then let us know if any changes need to be made. And if there are no changes, then we'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Sub moved.
Motion is recognized by Councilmember Andrew, seconded by Mayor Proton Moore. Any discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we have our agenda. First items on our agenda include recognitions and presentations. For that reason, I'll ask a very special group of young adults, if you don't mind to come on up. We've got the High Point University of AmeriCorps Vistas. Will you all please come on up? Will you all say a word, please? Alright, so I'm excited because for me, there's a personal connection to the work that AmeriCorps Vistas do. You all make such an exceptional impact on our community. And we're excited because as young folks, the nonprofits that you serve at, the communities that you're in, you're building capacity, and that's the name of the game. And I think it's important that we recognize and honor moments like this. We know that at the federal level, there are tough decisions being made every day about what are priorities and what are not. And I want to note that unfortunately, it seems that we're seeing this as a conversation piece in terms of whether or not Vista should or should not be supported. And I'm proud to say, I'm someone who's firmly in the camp of supporting Vista because I know Vista supports community. And we appreciate y'all's work, and for that, we're going to read this proclamation. I'm going to name every single person who's here. Ms. Johnson, I'm so glad you made it. They would not let me start without you, just FYI. You got good friends here. Make sure you buy 'em a taco today for Cinco de Mayo. Alright. Whereas the City of High Point has made strong progress toward food security and improved educational resources for all residents. Whereas High Point University is committed to the welfare of the citizens of the city and HPU students under the leadership of Dr. Nino Cubain, have volunteered over 1 million hours of service to the City of High Point. And whereas since 2013, High Point University has partnered with the Federal AmeriCorps Volunteers in Service to America, otherwise known as Vista, program so that HPU graduates and others could each serve in High Point over the course of a year to improve food security or education. And whereas HPU provides free housing, meals, leadership, and other resources so the vistas can be successful in the work that they do. And whereas the City of High Point aims to attract more young professionals to live, work, play, and most importantly, serve here. The City Council would like to encourage residents of High Point to welcome the vistas into our community, get involved in their projects, help them find ways to make a living in our city after they complete their year of service. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim that the High Point City Council commends and supports the AmeriCorps Vistas for their sacrifice, their service to the city, and all the gifts and skills that you bring to the work. High Point will be a stronger city and has been a very strong city because of your dedication, because of your service, and because of your passion. Together, we will make High Point a vibrant and livable community for all of our residents and visitors. And at this time, I want to name every single one of you. Catherine, is it Schumacher or Shoemaker? Shoemaker, Catherine Shoemaker. I know Catherine very well. I'd never call her by her last name, though. Terry Dixon Jr., Michaela Chin, Zara Arfim, Nailah Johnson, Hassan Allah, David Hicklin, Marie Kool, Josh Cameron, Gabriella Merlos, Christina Wiggins, Jasmine Brown, Lauren Riley, and I'm also going to invite up Ms. Kimberly Drydancy, who's the Robert G. Cope Junior Executive Director for the Center for Community Engagement at High Point University. Can we please celebrate these incredible young folks? Alright, so we're going to get prepared for a photo here, and I think we're going to need two rows. Okay, alright. That'll be nice. Can we clap it up for them one more time, please? Alright, thank you. For our next proclamation, I want to invite up Dr. Kelly Graves, President of Kellin Foundation, as well as her team, Erin Hayes, Haynes, Alex Espita, and Lillian Wingfield, all of the Kellin Foundation. If you all will come forward, and if there's anyone else I forgot to name, my apologies. What's her name? Melanie Garner, I'm sorry. The Pinwills, that's right. I got one in my office, by the way. Now, the wind's not blowing there, so it's not really doing its job, but at least it's pretty. Alright. This proclamation is for Mental Health, Children's Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, the Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments and resilience of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas, according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. Whereas the Kellin Foundation is a nationally recognized child mental health center in Guilford County and partners with the Resilient Guilford Network, Resilience High Point, the Guilford County System of Care Collaborative, Guilford County Schools, and over a dozen mental health agency partners to promote and educate the community about children's mental health needs and their families, which is fundamental to the future of High Point's well-being. And whereas, research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health disorders among children and adolescents provide them with better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas, children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to timely services and support that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate. They also benefit from the integration of behavioral health and primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas, it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn about warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas, it is the community's responsibility to ensure that comprehensive, diverse, and culturally-coordinated mental health services are recognized for our children. And therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month and call upon all citizens of our community to recommit to increased awareness and understanding of mental illness, improve the array of mental health services for people of all ages, and ensure those who are struggling do not feel alone. Can we please celebrate these folks for the great work that they do? Okay, alright, so for National Travel and Tourism Week, I'm going to invite up the team from Visit High Point. That includes President and CEO Melody Burnett. I also see a few folks with her, Nancy Bowman, who's VP of Marketing. And I'm assuming there's a few board members or just partners, community partners. Zhang Dagman with High Point by Design. Anyone else coming up from Visit High Point?
I'm a chair-elect, who's the board member of the Visit High Point Board.
Ah, okay. We appreciate you being up here. I didn't know you were chair-elect. Okay, I need to give you a call sometime. That's important work that y'all are doing. And John Conrad as well, okay? John, I don't recognize you unless you're yelling at a baseball or basketball game, honestly. Appreciate you being here. That's just, I'm excited about High Point. Whereas, the travel industry is essential to the success of every industry and will continue to be a critical part of High Point's economy, development, and workforce. And whereas, travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with an economic output of $2.9 trillion, supporting 15 million American jobs. And whereas, travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in High Point and across North Carolina by generating $4.5 billion in federal, state, and local taxes to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. And whereas, travel and tourism spending directly benefits the local economy with an economic output of $1.68 billion in visitor spending for Guilford County alone, which is an 8.7% increase from the previous year. And whereas, High Point generates over $98 million in estimated economic impact between High Point markets, saving our residents an estimated $200 per household in local taxes. And whereas, our city leverages High Point's reputation as the home furnishings capital of the world, with an exclamation point, by the way, and the home of a world-class university to further the evolution of High Point as a unique destination where what we make in High Point changes the world. And whereas, small businesses account for more than 60% of leisure and hospitality employment, whereas Visit High Point, in partnership with the city, continues to take courageous steps in creating a year-round destination through collaborative efforts within the Long Range Strategic Plan for Tourism that includes a multipurpose stadium, year-round festivals and events, temporary exhibits, tourism marketing, autism travel branding, and public art, all while creating an attractive experience for visitors and locals to enjoy. And therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th to May 10th, 2025, as National Travel and Tourism Week in the City of High Point and urge all of our citizens to join me in recognizing the essential role that this industry plays in our community and throughout the state. Can we please celebrate the great work of the High Point? Do you need someone to take your phone? Alright, there you go. She didn't want to wait for your pictures, Brandon. Oh, we got camera, sorry. At this time, I'll ask if there's a representative from the U.S. Postal Service. Okay, will y'all come on up? Now, what are y'all's names? Okay, Jennifer Steiner, Postmaster. Okay, a pleasure to meet you. Okay, Tiffany White, Food Drive Coordinator. Alright. Oh, and Joe Barnes, of course. How could we forget? Joe Barnes with the United Way, by the way. Got to make sure. Okay. Alright, well, I'm excited because this is about the Letter Carriers Food Drive Day. Whereas, every year, on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas, the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than 1.9 billion pounds of food have been collected and helped to replenish food shelves in thousands of community food banks nationwide. And whereas, we recognize Branch 936 and all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, and whereas, all the food collected in our community stays in our community. And we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas, we also recognize the noteworthy milestone of 32 years that the National Letter Carrier Food Drive celebrates in 2025. And whereas, community members can support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailboxes on Food Drive Day. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, May 10th, 2025, as Letter Carrier Food Drive Day in the City of High Point, and proudly present this proclamation to Branch 936 of the National Association of Letter Carriers, Postmaster Jennifer Steiner, and the postal employees of High Point, in recognition of their extraordinary community service to the people of our community, and we encourage the citizens of our community to join together as we help to serve those in need. Can we please celebrate the incredible work of our letter carriers? Now make sure not to cover up the shirt. We got to make sure people see that. Yeah, there you go. Thank y'all. And just to reiterate, people can place food out near their mailboxes or in their mailboxes this coming Saturday, right? Okay, if you want to support the food drive, place it in or near your mailbox. Okay, alright, for this one, I'll call up a special guest, Tasha Logan Ford, City Manager. It says "and" city staff. I don't know if we can get all 1,500 of us up here. You think so? But the folks who are here, this is for Public Service Recognition Week. So, city staff, if you're here in council chambers, will you please join us up front so we can celebrate you? Will y'all please clap for them as they come forward? Now, Brandon, if we can find someone to take the photo, I'd get you in the picture. You know how to take a picture? He said he can click a button, Brandon. It's not my call to make, but I'd love to get you in the picture. Okay, alright. Whereas, the City of High Point recognizes that public service is a cornerstone of our democracy. And whereas, public service is a noble calling where people choose to spend a portion or all of their career building community, contributing to the public good, and improving the well-being of our communities. And whereas, the dedicated city employees of High Point work tirelessly to ensure the safety, health, and prosperity of our citizens. And whereas, each member of our city's workforce contributes to the efficient operation of services such as public safety, infrastructure, maintenance, environmental protection, and community development. And whereas, the commitment, the professionalism displayed by our city employees exemplify the values of public service and play an essential role in making High Point a welcoming and vibrant community. And whereas, during Public Service Recognition Week, we celebrate the work of all city employees for the significant contributions they make and challenges they face each day, commend them for their accomplishments, and offer the sincere gratitude of the mayor and city council on behalf of all the people of our great community for their efforts to serve, protect, and promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, businesses, and visitors of our community. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th to May 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of High Point, and encourage all High Point citizens to recognize and honor the contributions and dedication of government employees to our communities. Can we please celebrate all of our folks? Megan, you don't want to get in? You can serve it. Two rows or three rows? If you're normally a front-row person, can you just come to the front if you don't mind? We're not trying to, we're not trying to call nobody out, but you're a front-row person. So you're not a front-row person? I think we need just one more person. Yeah, there we go. Oh, here, sorry. Whoever's in the center. Whoever's in the center? Because I don't want to be, there you go, there you go. Okay, for our final proclamation of the evening, I want to invite up our city clerk and deputy city clerk for Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Now, now, I just feel like I should tell everyone that we had such a busy list of proclamations. You all saw it. The month of May is the first full spring month, so people get excited about proclamations. And Sandy said, "We're just gonna, we're just gonna not read this one because there's so many other ones. We'll just file this one in the back." And I said, "Sandy, no, we will not." I said, "We will take time to celebrate the incredible hard work that oftentimes goes unseen, as you all know, and work that if we don't do it, if you don't do it, I don't know where I'd be. I don't know where this group would be." Because you all keep us all together, and quite frankly, you keep the city together. So, I'm proud to celebrate this and hope you all will join me. Whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at every level. And whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, the Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th to May 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and proudly extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Sandra Keeney, and our Professional Municipal Deputy Clerk, Allison Glenn, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and the exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Can we please celebrate our incredible clerk? Now, we do have to take a picture, so he might want us to move over a little bit. We will now transition to public comment period. Public comment period is typically held on the first Monday of each regular city council meeting schedule at 5:30 PM or as soon thereafter as reasonably possible based on our recognitions and our agenda. Persons who have signed or registered to speak will be called on in order that you signed in. Others who wish to speak and haven't signed up will also have the opportunity to speak after those who registered. Persons addressing city council are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Citizens will be asked to come to the podium, state your name and address and subject on which you plan to comment. If a large number of people are present to register concerns about the same subject, it is suggested that you might be acknowledged as one unified group while a designated speaker covers the various points. This helps to avoid repetition by giving an opportunity for people present with the same concerns to be recognized. At this time, first on our list, we will invite up, and forgive me because I don't want to get it wrong, Branos Aros? Did I say that correctly? Brong? Okay, I am so sorry. Will you please come forward? State your name and address for the record and the comment that you plan to speak on.
Brong Ong, 1301 Filbert Place. And I'm also speaking the topic of lung cancer awareness. I am here speaking now as not only a student of Southwest Guilford High School, but also as a lucky selective student who will be going to this annual's HOSA ILC International Leadership Competitions for future health professionals representing my state and the school. Lung cancer, as it remains, is the leading cause of lung cancer deaths in the U.S., yet awareness is still far too low. Many people assume it's only caused by smoking, but thousands of non-smokers are diagnosed with it every year. That means anyone at any age, including me, can get it. This issue hits close to home here in High Point. Families in our cities are affected every year. In fact, one of my friend's uncles have just been diagnosed this month. And many don't recognize the warning signs or understand the risk factors until it's too late. We need to do more to educate our community, not just adults, but also our students. As I approached my senior year of high school, I've noticed a concerning lack of education on both smoking and especially vaping. Yes, teachers and administrators do warn students about bringing vapes to school, but those warnings focus on rule breaking, not health. Students hear about punishment, not about the long-term damage to their lungs. Many students also believe at my school that vaping is safer than smoking, which is a horrible misconception. While vaping may look less harmful on the surface, it still exposes addictive nicotine and harmful chemicals that could damage their lungs and other health issues throughout the time. Our city has the opportunity to be proactive in saving lives, not just through treatment, but through prevention. Unfortunately, lung cancer awareness- Unfortunately, Lung Cancer Awareness Month isn't as widely recognized in High Point as it should be. While some events take place, city involvement is limited, and many, especially younger residents, may not even know that November is dedicated to this cause. So as a first step, we need to simply start the conversation, bringing more attention to lung health and encouraging our community to understand the risks better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is John Conrad.
Suddenly, I've grown taller. Thank you for that. My name is John Conrad, and I live at 4136 Coachman's Court, High Point, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager Ford, and esteemed staff. I'm here as a board member of the High Point Preservation Society to speak in support of completing the restoration of John Coltrane's Boyhood Home. John Coltrane was an artistic genius and a spiritual giant whose goal was to uplift people. As Whitton Marsala said, "His music was transcendental." That type of artistic achievement stays around. Carlos Santana even said, "Coltrane's sound rearranges molecular structure." Let me move that around. Is that me, or... Could be my... This thing. Sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get the band back together and finish the unfinished symphony. Let's make this unique historical attraction come fully back to life. This was John Coltrane's Boyhood Home where he learned to play music. Back in October of 2023, when Fox News presented Buckley's report on this project, it was said that at that time, there was no completion date set. I kindly request that you consider setting a firm completion date, along with a clear set of steps to be completed before a certificate of occupancy can be issued. Only then can we start formal tours, concerts, educational lectures, and private lessons given by visiting jazz professionals from music students at Penn Griffin School of the Arts, just a couple of blocks away, and beyond. I imagine that the impact of High Point's brand, on High Point's brand, if the entertainment world were to discover that the city had dropped the ball on this project, that they started to honor the musical giant who grew up and found his musical footing here in High Point, would not be received well. No amount of PR effort could overcome the negative effect that that news would create across social platforms, the news media, and the community of the jazz principles worldwide. So, let me say this. The time is now, and the people who can make this happen are you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on our list is Glenn Shavis.
No, it doesn't count. I'm 85 years old. I can't run, so I get as fast as I can. Glenn Shavis, I reside at 137 Oldville Drive, High Point, North Carolina. About four years ago, I stood before a council regarding a racist issue and regarding the military. A group decided they were going to give Purple Heart Plaques to all of the white soldiers that were killed in High Point. I saw it. I did my research, and I found out there was not one black soldier ever recognized. As a result of that, I came before a council, and we got a plaque up in the cemetery up here, whatever they want to call it. It's the War Memorial honoring those men. Today, I come before you regarding another family member. Do you have any... I'm sure all of you by now should know about the 6888. Oh, God, please shake your hands. Okay. Yes, that's where it is now. And I'm here to tell you, you have a person that you have to be proud of, and that's my aunt, my mother's sister, Ann Leach Johnson. Okay? She was in the first that group that went overseas. Went overseas. Didn't send white women over there. They formed this group, the 6888. They were all black, and they wanted to fail. All you have to do is research it. Guess what? They went over to sort out over five million pieces of mail that the white male soldiers couldn't get done. They did it in recatane and got nothing for it. They lived in poor accommodations. They talked about the dampness, the sickness, the odor. Why everyone else in the military from the United States had those things. I get emotional because I think it's ridiculous to go and serve your country and not be recognized. And here in High Point, she didn't blow a saxophone, and she didn't sing a song. But she gave her life in a way, not like shooting at her, but she went over and sacrificed years of her life and came home and was treated the same way. The same way. She graduated from William Penn High School. She graduated from Bennett College. I went over to Bennett College when I found out the news. They didn't even have a record of those women that graduated in '37.
Mr. Shavis, thank you so much for letting us know about Ms. Ann Leach Johnson.
Every time I come in here, that clock, you all, you speeds up.
It does not speed up. Next on our list, we'll recognize Cynthia Hall.
Yes, I'm Cynthia Hall. I live at 512 Manor Drive in High Point. And my topic is thanks to you for working towards a united and more, a better community here in High Point. I appreciate this opportunity to address Mayor Jefferson and all the city council members, and I want to express my thanks to you for recognizing and encouraging service to others in High Point. More, now more than ever, we need to reignite that feeling of community involvement, including, but not limited to, caring for each other, looking out for our neighbors, building that sense of community, providing support for the less fortunate, ensuring that our children have a well-rounded education, addressing the needs of our elderly population, and maintaining access to a strong public library. Leading by example, you are creating a unified community in High Point. Here, we have a network of public servants, private citizens, business and nonprofit leaders, religious leaders, and concerned citizens, all contributing to make High Point better. I want to share this quote from the Baha'i faith. "The betterment of the world can be accomplished through pure and goodly deeds, through commendable and seemly conduct." Every action we take individually and collectively can contribute to the betterment of High Point. I applaud your sustained efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list, I see Cece. Ms. Crawford. Ms. Crawford, is there a group with you that's speaking on this issue? Okay.
Yellow shirts. Thank you, Mayor Jefferson. Good evening, council members. Like you said, my name is Cecily Crawford. Everyone just calls me Cece. I'm the program director for American Friends Service Committee of North Carolina. We launched Keep Gate City Housed, hence these very loud, bright yellow shirts. Let me tell you about Ms. Smith, an elderly woman who showed up in court just a few weeks ago. Her rent was $2,500. But this winter, her utility bill, it shot up unusually high, and she faced a choice between paying her electricity or paying her rent. She made the hard but human decision to pay her power bill first. She paid her utilities because she needed her oxygen tank to live. That decision brought her to eviction court, and she stood there alone, no attorney, no advocate, just the fear of losing the place she'd called home for years. She's not alone. Every year, over 16,000 families in Guilford County are summoned to eviction court. Most tenants, like Ms. Smith, have no legal representation. Meanwhile, 90% of landlords do. It's not a fair fight. But cities across the country have shown that we can make a change in that. These programs that have been enacted across the U.S., they guarantee tenants access to legal services and support preventing evictions. Right-to-council programs in places like Cleveland and New York have reduced eviction filings by over 30%. And the majority of represented tenants can remain housed. And here's the thing, this policy also saves money. Studies show that for every dollar invested in the right to counsel, government saves $3 to $6 by reducing homelessness, shelter stays, emergency medical services, and other public costs. The same goes for rental assistance. Greensboro has already invested $1.47 million in a local fund that helps families bridge short-term crisis. An eviction might cost a city $30,000 per household, but rental assistance can prevent it for a fraction of that, often under $4,000. These are not abstract numbers. These are lies. Seniors like Ms. Smith, veterans, parents, and children are all facing life-altering instability. So, High Point, you have an opportunity to lead with dignity, with compassion, and with fiscal responsibility. I urge you to support a county-wide right to counsel. And so, we ask that you pass a resolution in support of a right to counsel for tenants facing eviction in Guilford County and join Greensboro in creating a rental assistance fund to prevent evictions before they happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Next on our list, is it Terrell Dunger or Dunger?
Dungy.
Dungy, so sorry. Good to see you.
Hi there, council. My name's Terrell Dungy. I currently live in Greensboro, but I did, was born and raised on the corner of Worth and Leonard here in High Point. So it's kind of cool to be in here. Like Cece said, I work with American Friends Service Committee as well, doing our work about eviction prevention. And really want to talk to you about our advocacy work for the efforts of the Team Project and our push for a broader permanent program at the county level. So, you might not know this, but that house at Worth and Leonard burnt down back when I was in grade school. And for a time, I was homeless. I lived in a hotel with my family. Luckily, our local community church helped us to repair that home enough that we can move back into it from the fire damage. And it's, that wasn't a program, but that community help of helping us figure out how to navigate that process of figuring out how to stay housed, not on the street, and get us back home was so pivotal to keeping us from that experience. And it really helped me not miss any school, luckily. And that's what we're trying to bring to the rest of the county. We've seen the Team Project now has been a pilot program with UNCG and Legal Aid for the majority of the pandemic, being funded through the COVID funds and some of the county's efforts, as well as the rental assistance that Cece just mentioned that Greensboro put in place after some of our advocacy last year. Now, we're trying to scale that up. We know that a lot of the COVID funding is running out, and we're trying to make sure that this is a program that works at keeping folks in their homes, and it's the only eviction prevention model that exists for the county. And we understand that to fight homelessness, we have to be housing first. So that's what we're pushing for. We're pushing for the county to support expansion to a right-to-council program that would offer that legal aid resource and assistance and access, as well as comparing it with rental assistance for the locales that have the highest impact from the evictions, as well as the mediation and services, education to tenants so they understand their rights, more likely to stay in their homes. And again, I think right now, we're at about 26 jurisdictions, a couple of states, a couple of counties, but all of them are seeing a huge return in not just investment, but also seeing their high eviction numbers come down. We've consistently had 16,000 evictions before COVID. This is a real opportunity for us to drastically bring that down. So we're really calling on High Point City Council to help us in calling on the county by sharing a resolution in support of right-to-council ordinance. So, thank you.
Next on my list is Coralie Cowan.
Greetings, city council, mayor. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Coralie Cowan. I live at 905 Johnson Street in High Point. I am also the treasurer of the High Point Preservation Society. And I'm here to speak again on the John Coltrane House that is owned by the City of High Point. Now, High Point has two, not just one, but two Coltrane Jazz Festivals. There's a statue right on the corner to John Coltrane with a sign that mentions his house. There's a permanent exhibit at the High Point Museum. There's a, the school, Penn Griffin, has an auditorium named after him. This is one of the most important African-American heritage sites in the city, in my opinion. And it's very sad to see that it's been neglected. Since 2019, there was a condition assessment report done on the house, and that condition assessment report did itemize all the different criteria to restore and renovate the house. In 2022, the state saw fit to grant the High Point Preservation Society money to help with that restoration. It was not enough to completely finish the restoration. So I'm here to implore the city council to possibly find a way to add into your budget the restoration and completion of this house. This is not just John Coltrane's house. It's also very important to his father, his grandfather, who actually had the house built. He was born into slavery, and his story talks a lot about how he struggled with discrimination and just terrible, terrible bigotry and hatred toward him. He actually had to move several dear cities before he found High Point. So, his struggle is also an important story that this house tells. But John Coltrane is world famous, and he has, and that house has the capacity to bring in so much tourism and so many different people from all over to come visit, and it can actually revitalize the community. You've put a lot of money into Washington Street, and this is a block away from Washington Street. Not even that. It's like three houses from Washington Street. So, I just implore you to take that into consideration when you are making your budget this year, to put some funds into that house. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes... Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment period? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and thank everyone who took time to come up to speak. Our next item for discussion is under General Business, Item 2025-152, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Series 2025 Combined Enterprise System Revenue Bonds. For that, council will recognize Mr. Bobby Fitzhawn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is the initial resolution or initial authorization to issue up to $41.2 million in revenue bonds for the water and sewer system. The projects being funded include the east side UV upgrade, the Waterview Pump Station improvements, west side centrifuge upgrade and replacement, white mill lift station, and the Ward Water Plant Filters, one through four rebuild, exciting projects. We anticipate we'll only issue about $33.7 million. However, the last two projects are still currently out to bid, so we've allowed some room in there in case those projects come in a little higher. They still have to be done, so that would give us the opportunity to issue a little more. We do anticipate bringing the final resolution to the May 19th meeting. The LGC will consider approval on June 3rd, and then we will close mid to late June. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Now, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of High Point, North Carolina, directing the application to the Local Government Commission for approval of Combined Enterprise System Revenue Bonds, requesting local government commission approval in certain related matters. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, recognize the council member Holmes. Any discussion on this motion? Any none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you. Next item is Item 2025-153, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing Installment Financing Contract for Fleet Equipment Replacement. For that, we'll recognize Mr. Fitzhawn again.
This is the approving resolution for an installment financing agreement with Bank of America related to the acquisition of fleet equipment. From time to time, we finance larger vehicle purchases in our fleet replacement schedule. As part of the FY25 budget, we anticipated financing three public service vehicles for approximately $1.55 million over a five-year period. This includes a front-end loader, refuse truck, and two freightliner VAC trucks. All three vehicles have already been ordered back in August. We've received the front loader, and the two freightliner VAC trucks are due, and I believe, in October. So those actually had more than a 365-day wait time. An RFP was issued on April 4th, 2025, to more than 50 lending institutions. We received seven responses. The details of those responses are in the attached bid tab. This resolution authorizes an installment financing agreement with Bank of America, who had the lowest total cost of borrowing. I do want to note, the last time we borrowed approximately the same amount for five years was in 2021, and then the interest rate was 0.86%. Just to show how times have changed in that period.
Mr. Fitzhawn, thank you. Are there any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment financing agreement, a security agreement, and related documents in connection with the financing of various vehicles for the city of High Point, North Carolina. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, recognize the council member Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Fitzhawn. Next item is Item 2025-161, Consideration of the Proposed FY 2025-2026 Budget Review Calendar and Establishment of a Public Hearing Date. Council is requested to establish the public, budget public hearing from Monday, May 19th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m., and establish the following dates for city council budget work sessions. Those are Monday, May 12th at 4:00 p.m., Wednesday, May 21st at 4:00 p.m., and if necessary, Wednesday, May 28th at 4:00 p.m. Are there any questions from council about this item? If not, then I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Moore, second, recognize the council member Johnson. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion is adopted. Item 2025-163, Consideration of Reappointments to the Citizens Advisory Council. Council is requested to confirm the following reappointments, with terms effective June 1, 2025, and expiring May 31, 2027. Mayor Pro Tim recommends the appointment of Marcus Bingham. Councilmember Cook recommends the appointment, reappointment of Miyaka Sturtevant, and Councilmember Peters recommends the reappointment of Amoy Lindo Coleman. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Just a comment to say thank you to all those that are willing to serve, and I think I've heard good reports from the committee. Thank you for doing that.
Indeed. Any other discussion on this motion? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, recognize the council member Cook, second, recognize the council member Andrew. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. Prior to adjournment, are there any announcements from the dais or comments? I'll say congratulations to Rockers and CCFC, both kicking off their season this year. It's been good to see our downtown so active. It's been really good. Also, major shout-out and appreciation to all the folks involved with High Point Market. It was a really good market. We got our numbers in, and attendance and registration were higher than what some projections even thought, and there was really positive sentiment. And so we appreciate all the folks at the Market Authority, all the folks who do business here, the visitors, especially our staff who worked really hard to support Market during that time. Any other comments, announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, recognize the council member Holmes, seconded by council member Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait. I would like to say Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers this weekend.
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
I've had that on my list, and I forgot to say it. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Does that affect the motion on the floor?
Yes.
That was an afterthought.
Yes. Happy Mother's Day. Thank you for that. Also, since it is the day, Happy Cinco de Mayo for everyone who is celebrating.
Well, since we're all doing it, my birthday is Sunday. If you're listening to this, happy birthday.
Thanks, Mike. Councilmember Cook, you did make me start checking my calendar, just in case I got nervous about us missing something. If there is another holiday and we're forgetting it, please forgive us, but we appreciate and celebrate the occasions and grateful for it. All those in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.